Now we're on the meeting.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, great.
All right.
I don't know. I put a lot of wire.
Good evening. For us, start the East Fall Field Township Board Supervisor Meeting September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M. We'll start with a call to order, uh, sign of meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Of America. Reading Justice for All.
There was an executive session held on September eleventh, twenty twenty-five to discuss legal matters. Uh, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion? I make motion to approve the August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five board supervisor meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Hi Claire.
Hello.
Fire Department and Department of Emergency Services. There were reports given for the Westwood Fire Company Fire Chiefs Report, the Westwood Fire Company P M S Report, the Modena Fire Company Fire Chiefs Report, the Modena Fire Company Fire Chiefs Report, uh, only for review, and the Modena Fire Company G M S Report. Um, in the agenda, has everyone seen it or have access to it? All right, there is a summary of the four liaisons in there. Nothing has changed from the last meeting. It's there for informational purposes. Treasurer's report. Do I have a motion?
I made a motion for the August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five president's report as presented.
Second. Any questions or comments from the board? None. Any questions or comments from the public? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Payment authorization. I make a motion to approve the payment authorizations for the period of August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five through September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. The total amount of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-one cents.
Second.
Motion for the proper second. Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Minimum municipal obligation, the first pension and non uniform pension finance. Scott, Dave, do we want to discuss that? Give a summary.
Yes, they have some minimum municipal obligations. So, uh, for our admin staff, we make those payments through payroll runs every two weeks. For the police, we make a lump payment once a year, uh, to satisfy the requirements from, uh, Pennsylvania municipal retirement.
Okay. There's no question.
Except to let you know.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
No.
Questions or comments from the public? Contract with Auto Agent for municipal online payment portal. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve a three-year agreement with Auto Agent or the municipal online payment portal solution.
Same.
Any questions or comments from the boards?
Could I just explain briefly?
Yes, that is.
Um, this will be a new credit card processor for the township. Um, it's very easy for us because the fees go to the end user. They're set. Um, and it also allows people to pay if they don't want to pay hereby check. They can do a bank e-check, bank A C H for a flat fee of a dollar fifty regardless of the amount. And whatever fees we incur will be passed along to the user, so we won't break even.
Mike, one thing I want to mention, we're actually doing this right now, but the company that we were doing business with, um, what was it?
Paytrace.
Paytrace, our bank notified us that they're not supporting that anymore, so we, we're already taking credit card payments. We're just switching to another company. No cost to the township.
No, none. Again, any questions or comments from the board?
Sounds like a good thing. It must be good for the residents, right? Lower costs.
Any questions or comments from the public? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Manager of the board, Scott?
All right, uh, good evening, everyone. This is informational. Uh, the township advertised openings for the municipal building committee, uh, on the website. Uh, we received several applications. Uh, we appreciate the interest of everyone that applied. We got another application today. Um, the board is looking at how and when they will interview the applicants, and I expect this will happen at an upcoming, uh, meeting this year, so, um, no board action is required on that one. Uh, next on the list is, uh, this is informational as well. Our first budget workshop is October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, it's also the date of our regular meeting, so any other business could happen, uh, or appear on the agenda. Uh, we've advertised the dates for the budget meetings. They're on the website, um, and those meetings, of course, are open to the public. And then, uh, next on my list is, uh, approval for emergency contract with Hafer Equipment for repairs to underground storage tank. I just want to provide a little, uh, background on this. Uh, D E P notified us in June that our three-year inspection was due. Uh, the inspection was completed for the deadline of August ninth, um, but it did reveal some deficiencies, um, that needed correction. Uh, so, D E P requires that deficiencies be corrected as quickly as possible. Uh, typically, if you wait, D E P will find you, um, which is why we, uh, we take action, uh, fast. Um, there's a couple, uh, a couple things on there that needed to be fixed. One of them was an overfill valve and a pipe jacket. And the proposed motion will retroactively approve, uh, the agreement with Hafer in the amount of eight thousand fifty dollars to complete this work.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to retroactively approve an agreement with Hafer Equipment to repair the product piping jacket and install overfill along.
Second. Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Great, thanks, everyone. Um, and next on the list is just a reminder that our bulk trash drop-off event is on Saturday, October eighteenth, uh, from nine A M. to three P M. We've been talking about it for a couple months now. The event is at the township building here, twenty-two sixty-four Strasburg Road. Um, we are accepting bulk trash items. These are the kind of things, if you're cleaning out your garage or basement, uh, old furniture, things like that, you can bring here. Uh, household hazardous waste, we would not accept. Uh, we are taking televisions, electronics. Um, the event is free, although if you're disposing of tires, there's a small charge. And this event is open to township residents only. Uh, proof of residency is required, so we will.
Refrigerators.
As long as the freon is removed and there's a tag on there showing that the freon is removed, then we'll take it.
And this, uh, we can still drop off electronics up at the township or ring grabbers.
Correct.
In addition.
This is just another opportunity to take great electronics. Get rid of that. No board actions required.
Question to the man.
Sure.
When are the interviews being conducted for the, uh, people they've appointed to the year? Go.
I think that's up to the board. I think we're, we're looking at the fall. We're still, you know, gathering those, um, those applications. We just.
I just want to go on record to say I would be vehemently opposed to Shane Cooley being placed on the municipal building committee in light of the fact that we're going to have to increase the township budget by thousands because of his right to know quest. Um, so I just don't understand it, and it would be, uh, it's not wise, and I'll leave it right there.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. Um, we have give back. We already.
As long as done.
Okay.
Um, last on my list is new business. Just a couple things here. Um, first one is trash service. Uh, the township received, um, were higher than, uh, normal complaints about Blazensky this month. Uh, we recognize we've had, we've had some issues, um, recently. Uh, we are meeting with them, uh, this week, and, uh, um, obviously, we want to rectify any problems. Um, we ask that residents continue to let us know about the trash issues. Um, trash@eastfallfield.org is the email address, address. Um, we want to make sure that residents, uh, know about that. Again, trash@eastfallfield.org. Um, if you have a complaint or a problem with your trash, please let us know. Um, other than that, just a few other updates here. Um, Mortonville Bridge, I know we talked about that at the last meeting. Um, we are, we are still working with the Chester County Conservation District. Um, they are coming out in October to do a site survey of the stream. Um, so we are working closely with them. Hope to have some more information after that happens. Uh, Sawmill Road Culver, uh, project, we've been talking about that one for a while. We are expecting that bid, bid package to be ready for October, and our engineer is still working with Verizon on the utility relocation, so I hope to have some more information on that shortly.
That's the bid out the construction, Scott?
Correct. And that's, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, legal, Mr. Crowning?
Sure, uh, the township received two applications to zoning hearing board. They're slightly different in their nature. Actually flipped in my packet. First one's, uh, the, um, first one I'll talk about is one oh five Mortonville Road. That is a variance request, um, for that property to, I could put a, uh, or ditch that door, barn or something within the front yard setback. It's a property with multiple frontages, meaning many front yards, and there's an eighty-foot front yard, um, setback. That district apparently, and they're looking to go to forty feet. The township for each of these applications has the options of either staying neutral, um, taking a position in favor, writing a letter, or taking a position in opposition, in which case you can either write a letter or send to your attorney. Um, and, um, I'm not sure they have any opinion on, on this one. Generally, with these, we defer to the zoning hearing board. It was informational unless the board wanted to take a position one way or another.
Do we have a hearing yet?
Uh, it's tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow.
And then, let me know when you're. The next one is for one fifty-two Doe Run Road. This is for, um, to add auto sales to an existing, um, business use. They, they put Stan LLC at the property. This is not a variance application. It's a special exception. Special exception is neither special nor an exception. Instead, it's a, a use that's allowed in the zoning ordinance at, on that property or in that district, provided the applicant goes before the zoning hearing board has the hearing and establishes certain criteria. So, um, that one will go as well before the zoning hearing board. And again, the, he was the board can take a position, if you want to take a position, pro, con, or neutral.
Is that one scheduled, Mike?
I believe. Oh, that one's tomorrow. Yeah, tomorrow.
On the first of March.
Yep, tomorrow.
Right.
And that's it for my, uh, informational.
Thank you.
Do we need to do any action on that? Something? Yeah. You're bidding on projects? Okay. You know your business, Tony?
Nope.
Parks and Rec, um, no reports submitted. Um, informational, the South, the township, flea market will be.
Can you back up for a second with Parks and Rec?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? Um, um, do we, are we gonna have applications for a new chair, or how's that gonna work?
The Park and Rec handles their own chair and vice chair internally, so there's nothing for us to do.
Okay.
The only thing I think we would do is if a new member applies, we may have to approve their appointment to the board, the committee.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Um, so yes, there's a flea market this Saturday, September twenty-seventh, um, from nine A M. to noon at the township park as in informational. Then there's a proposal for jet bounce party rental. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to township approve proposal from Jets Bounce Party Rental. The amount of quarter and seventy dollars from the town's park and recreation fund for an inflatable rental at the Fall Festival Cornhole Tournament on October eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Any questions or comments from the board?
Bouncy Houses are popular.
Any questions or comments from the public? Yes.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment on it. If I kind of help do it. Uh, just anybody who likes playing cornhole or just wants to have fun, have a good time. Uh, you can go online. There's lots of, you can go to the, uh, East Fall Field site or their Facebook page or whatever. There's a Q R card. You can go. It's, the cornhole tournament is being run by, um, United Sports. Uh, one of the guys that does that for United Sports lives in the township, so they'll be doing that. We're gonna have animated brewing there. Uh, we're, we're gonna have a bunch of vendors, food trucks, hopefully the bounce house, if you guys vote against it. Uh, but stuff, stuff for the whole family. It's gonna be starting at noon, the command and register and everything, but then we'll be doing the cornhole tournament starting at one o'clock. We're gonna go for like one to five. But yeah, the more teams, the better. So, go online, come on out.
All right, one second real quick. I have to, so to be clear, you and Terry are the team to beat in the competitive division?
Yes, absolutely. You know it.
Exactly. All right, I just want to make sure. So there's the goal.
I just wanted to clarify that the, uh, flea market this, uh, Saturday is until two P M.
Oh, two P M. All right, so retroactively, the flea market is from nine A M. to two P M.
Do you, um, have to, um, get a table and pay for it, right?
There's no charge for the tables, and I think we're already, uh, you're filled up. Okay.
Just in case anyone asks the name.
Yeah, but they can contact me and I'll get that information to Jen. She's got waiting us. All right, thanks.
Um, we have a motion for the proper second. Any questions or comments from us? No. Any other questions or comments from the public? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Uh, planning commission, no planning commission reports submitted. Police department, August police report is submitted to the board and residents for review. I believe it's available here. Historical commission report was submitted and is in the packet. Um, old business. Is there any old business we need to discuss? New business, any new business we need to discuss? Yes.
Um, I want to bring up a proposal too for, um, the property we own on Goose Town Road, um, which has trails on it and proposed to be a horse trail park. Um, we used to ride back there. There's numerous trails, very crowded, and we need to utilize it, and then we'll, uh, open space wreck. I don't know if that was in it, but we can add to it, and so maybe bring that up, uh, to, you know, have a place where Chester County is still very, uh, horse friendly. So that's something I want to look into.
Scott, who? Would that go to a particular committee?
I was gonna say, yes.
Supervisors should.
Um, parking rec might want to take a look at that one.
Yes, that's a.
Sure. Yeah.
I think that's one of the meetings.
Any other new business? Public participation. Has anyone not been here to go over the public participation rules and regulations? I'm assuming everyone is. I'm sorry. This is my first time here. I just moved to the township a few months back. Uh, I'm not gonna read her bio. It's relatively simple. Um, if you have a comment, please come up to the days, um, give your name. If you're comfortable, give your address. Um, we ask that you be polite, kind, courteous, speak directly to the board, not to anyone else in the room, so we don't have conversations like that. Um, and we try to limit the, your comments to three minutes. Thank you. Okay. So, public participation. Anyone? Phil. Phil. Phil, I apologize.
Um, try to make this as rapid as possible. My number one concern is, uh, Philip, East Fall Field Township. Um, my, I'm sorry. Uh, my number one concern is the property at one oh two Perry Court was given a variance, uh, change or whatever to, uh, allow for a building to be put there. Uh, the property is still listed for sale, and the property listing says it is permit ready, but according to the variance, the, or according to the order, the variance expired one year after it was issued. It was issued jet July sixth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, it was applicant must obtain building permits within six months. Uh, da, 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 must complete construction within one year thereafter in accordance with the requirements of the zoning order, ordinance. I am basically just asking that, I'm looking for confirmation from the board that the property, whoever buys it, will have to go through the variance process again, including public notice and participation before any further permitting is allowed.
I remember that. Can you just remind me of the date of variance, please? Is it there?
July sixth, twenty twenty-three is when the order was issued. Uh, therefore, it is long since expired because no building was ever built.
Excuse me, could you just tell me where Perry Court is in the township?
It's in, uh, Doe Run Farms, one.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, for the recycling trash bulk thing that you're doing, uh, for refrigerators, uh, in my experience, most of recycle plants will accept refrigerators at the storage containers lines are cut. That proves that it is empty. Is that, will that be considered acceptable at the recycling slash bulk trash pickup? That's something for you guys to look into. Uh.
To be clear, I think currently it's best, the best, that it be tagged.
Okay. I'll check. I'm just saying, if, if, if a tag, if a customer does not bring a tag, but the lines are cut, most recycling places that I've experienced allow, consider that as free on free. No pun intended. Uh, uh, I find it interesting that a certain member of the board would not want. a certain member of the board would not want a person with their masters in engineering to be on the building committee, as like I work in construction, would that help me out as well? I mean, I'm just saying, I think it's a little ridiculous that you wouldn't want somebody who has experience in an industry that this is going to require. So, uh, personal grudges are not a reason to pass unqualified individual. Uh, and the grudges are, uh, obvious. Uh, no answer on the result of the bag band survey, and in reference to that, I have not yet seen a township building survey, and as a person who's paying taxes, I insist that there be one before another penny is spent.
Guys, uh, clarification. Is the service for the sack band still open or have been?
Uh, it's still open.
All right, so that's still ongoing, and I hear you about the request for the building. And then, oh, yeah, wait, can you comment on the variance?
Oh, so if, under the terms of the variance, they have to reapply for, for initial variance, really? Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Bill, presuming that they're going in for, they're coming in for the same thing. Who knows, if someone else buys it, they might want the same. Uh, the people that have been actively looking at the property have builders with them. I got you. Yeah.
Right? Good. Uh, first of all, thank you, Wilson. I'm glad I live right in your head. Um, I, I, I can't believe that would even be brought up. Like, his unprofessionalism is just astounding. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm much more qualified to be on that board than you. I know you and Kat started best, you were on the board quite a while ago, um, at its inception. Um, I don't, I don't know what you're really qualified to do, but it's definitely, you know, you, you definitely don't trump me on a building committee. Um, I can only think of a few reasons why you wouldn't want me to be on building committee. Uh, but, you know, the fact that you brought up right-to-know requests and the toss to the township for the right-to-know requests, um, because I asked for your emails, um, which I do appreciate because there's a lot of good stuff in there. Um, I just want to be as educated as possible. I want to understand what's been going on in the township for as long as I can, and I'll get all the details. And if that costs money, I'm sure most people probably are okay with putting that, you know, a few thousand dollars bill. Um, if that's what it takes to get the emails to me. So, definitely appreciate that. Um, I did want to ask about the traffic, um, the traffic calming. So I think it's slated for October sixth. Is that what the sign said? Oh, there's a sign up there now.
When is the email supposed to start? I haven't responded.
Sometime in October. I don't, I don't have the exact date. Like I said, the sixth. Um, I know I had an email string going back and forth. This is kind of why I want the emails. The primary reason is I think a lot of people email the township and they don't get a response. Um, I know it's been better as of late, uh, and there's probably good reason for that, because now I'm asking for all the emails, but the last email I had sent to the township, which would be the manager and the board, was August twenty-ninth. It had, it was riddled with questions. They were not answered. Um, so, you know, I've asked to do the, is it Jammer or Jamar? Mr. Osborne.
Jamar.
Jamar. I asked to do our own independent Jamar study, because we could get it back very quickly. It's like a week that you guys did it for Park Avenue. Um, that was, I guess, denied just by not even responding. Um, and I also would ask for the before study, even if it's the raw information. But apparently, we're gonna wait till after we do this construction project, bundle up the before study and the after study and dumb it down for residents and then present it, but it kind of, you know, I, I don't want to see the before study. I'd also want to see before and after studies of similar implementations where they've been done. I, I just don't understand. These are very easy things to get a hold of before we do a construction project. Um, and then that doesn't even touch the, the noise issue, if how much noise this is gonna cause for the right to know there. So, I feel like these were appropriate questions. Um, again, as, as, as Philip brought up, it's kind of a grudge thing at this point. Um, there is some animosity. Uh, I don't know if you just don't like, you know, answering questions or being questioned, um, on, on things that seem reasonable. Um, I want to, you know, I want to go, so, and then the other thing is, if, if you want to report me on the Facebook group, just come talk to me if you have a problem, right? I know it's, it's not just you. It's been multiple people. So just come talk to me. I, there's nothing to report because I'm not doing anything wrong. It's freedom of speech. If you don't like it, then there might be some introspection that needs to happen. Thank you.
Let me say something, John. I think the introspection, Shane.
Yeah.
The introspection is that you're insulting when you say people dump things down and that you know more than someone else. I think that you're insulting to the board. And I think that's where you need to take a look at yourself when you're asking questions.
Uh, I, I think, um, you, you didn't address the fact that Wilson said I should not be on that committee because I'm costing the township thousands of rest right-to-know requests.
Well, is that appropriate behavior to spend all tax money, thousands and thousands?
Requesting information is appropriate behavior.
Yes, I didn't say that requesting information, but abusing.
I was never told how much it costs to ask for the emails. To me, it's a drag and draw. I have to reply. All right. Do you think it's abuse?
I think you're abusing the township.
I think he's asking questions.
Okay, go ahead.
And he's insulting them too.
Insulting them.
You're insulting the board and the taxpayers.
Not the whole, I have not insulted the whole.
You insulted the board and you insulted taxpayers, and that's all I have to say.
I, I've insulted Wilson, maybe. I don't even know if that's an insult, if to say that I'm more qualified. Then, I'm just, I'm just responding.
I'm just.
I just don't know if I get enough time to, like.
I don't give you the time.
If it, if it is an insult for me to say I'm more qualified than Wilson to be on a building committee, that, that sounds like, that sounds like a cat problem.
You know what? Don't flip it, because you didn't say it that way.
It's on video, which is incredible.
Yeah, it's on video. You're right. The way you say it will be.
I, I did forget you're running for supervisor, but this might be your flex. Um, there, there's no way you get, there's no way you get one of them.
You're insulting people because that's your, you know, that's your expertise.
My expertise.
And I'm not having it, okay? So when you come up to the board, do not insult the board and do not insult the taxpayers.
The board, you say the board, you're saying foolish. Please, do you have gaslighting in you?
That's what you do.
I think that kind of was gaslighting, but do you know what that even means? All right, that was my comment, it was directed, my comment was directed.
I see you. I know.
That's us. Any, any other comments? Question, I'm gonna go. Okay, thank you.
Agreed. The night for a two-months round request are legal. There is a legal solicitor review that has a financial impact. Just to make clear.
Would it be considered insulting to question somebody's ability to hear to their face after they explained it to them? Okay, I apologized after the fact, but now I'm kind of regretting it. So I don't want to hear you accuse the citizens of this town, township, sorry, of being insulting when you are guilty yourself. So cast the first stone.
Any other public participation, Bill, please?
Hi, Barbara Ruth. Um, I have some, well, first of all, I, I'm a taxpayer. I'm not insulted by anything. Um, and I hope that whoever replies for any committees gets, you know, gets a fair chance. Barbara Ruth, R O D.
Okay.
So I hope everybody gets, all the applicants get a fair chance. Um, I was hoping to find out more information about the building because I'm, I've been in the township almost thirty years, but I'm starting to have more time to participate. And I went on the website, and I clicked on the feasibility study link on there, and I hope that's not a feasibility study. I think it's a PowerPoint. I did my thirty-five-year career. I've worked a lot in public involvement, and I've reviewed hundreds of feasibility studies, and that's not a feasibility study. So hopefully it's the wrong document. And I was also wondering if we could see the G C E D document that they reference in there, um, as the basis for the building. And I haven't heard any meeting minutes, but I didn't see those on there. And I was hoping to go to the meeting yesterday, but I guess it was canceled.
Yeah, they didn't meet in pretty early. Um, I don't believe we ever have minutes from the building made correct. Correct. It's a day. We haven't helped them yet. Um, so the best I can do is, I have not related to the document that you saw online. I can work into later, but, um, if you email the board and Scott, the manager, we can see about providing it if it's something different. Um, moving forward, unfortunately, the best I can offer is if they have a meeting next month, which will be canceled today of, if it's not to be held, attend the meetings. Um, and they, they've been every couple of months. We schedule the beginning of the year, all of the meetings, and then cancel as we don't need them, which is difficult for the board supervisors, which they don't meet the first Tuesday of the month. We usually meet last week of the month. Um, so it's the same practice for the community school bill. Um, so that's the only responses I have. Dave, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Talk more about it afterwards. We can go through some of the specifics, in my understanding, because I was on the committee previously. Um, and Lou.
And I think before that information was on the website. That looked really helpful.
And that's been brought up before, actually.
Oh, and Barbara, the, the feasibility study, there's a PowerPoint on there, and there's also a feasibility study. Um, she's taking around to, uh, for the end of the meeting. I can hopefully show you on my, uh, on my computer where it's located.
Because every time we click, my husband clicks. Maybe we missed that other link, but it says click here for the full study, and it pulled up that PowerPoint.
Okay.
And, and Barbara, if anybody wants to apply, there's a form, right? To fill out to be.
Follow your application.
And you just tell which committee and get some background. That gets right to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public participation?
I just have a question about the timer. Um, I don't, you know, like, if, if you're explaining, I think the intent is for the person asking questions or making comments to have three minutes.
Correct.
I don't know if there's a way to add time before the timer goes off, right, so that there's, or, or pause.
I can pause.
Did you, okay, um, like, if, like, Mike's talking, you can pause it.
Okay.
Awesome. Appreciate it. And I do love the speakers, or the microphone and the timer. Much, much pleasure.
Um, I can't speak prepared. I'm running the meeting. I was trying to give you the four, three minutes, and I know we have conversations between, I'm not trying to cut anyone off. Being abrupt. So, um, we'll go from there. Again, any other, yes?
I just, sorry, Courtney Velka. Um, I just wanted to commend, like, for a job well done tonight, you handled yourself really well, and you controlled the room, and I appreciate your tone, your respect level for everyone out here and willing to give people the opportunity to see. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you. Nina?
Um, I'd like to say thank you for the microphones. It is a welcome. Uh, I concur with Shane that we can now hear you. Uh, I would like to put a request that if this table also could have that, uh, advantage, uh, we would be able to hear them distinctly as well. And, uh, I want to thank, uh, for the representation of the Eastbowlfield Township, uh, at the nine-one-one, and our, uh, chief, thank you very much. It was so nice to see the representation there. And that might be the last one, um, at the school. So thank you very much, and that's for us to hear you. It's better government.
Any other public participation? I make a motion to adjourn the Southwood Township Police Department meeting at seven oh five PM.
Thank you.
Hold your favorite.
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone. Good night. Thanks, Claire. Hope you're enjoying your, your day.
Thank you for the response by me.
Yeah, I, I knew, I, I kind of knew when I was asking that it might have been something that had.